We welcome you to a Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Our dear heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together again to study at your feet. Thank you that your word is a lamp to our feet and a light to our path. As we study Joseph's rise to power in Egypt tonight, help us in the diligent study of your word and teach us to apply its principles to our everyday lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Last time, we studied Genesis, chapter forty-one, but we stopped at verse thirty-six. Today, we are continuing that chapter. When we finish that chapter, and then we will go on to chapter forty-two. So today, we're going to read Genesis forty-one, thirty-seven to fifty-seven, and then the whole of chapter forty-two. And we're going to talk about Joseph's rise to power. And Joseph's brothers go to Egypt. Last week, where we saw, last week, we saw how Pharaoh, Pharaoh's butler and baker, who were both confined in the same prison that Joseph was in, dreamt the same night. Both men were troubled and sad because they had no one to interpret their dreams. Joseph gave them the interpretations. The butler will be restored to his former position in the king's palace, while the baker will be executed. And even though Joseph asked the butler to remember him and make mention of him to Pharaoh, he completely forgot all about him. And Joseph had to stay two more years in the prison. However, after two years, when Joseph had two dreams that he needed someone to interpret for him, after all the magicians and wise men in Egypt had failed in this regard, the butler remembered Joseph and told the king about him. Now, let's now read. The king ordered, before we, we read that chapter, the king ordered that Joseph be brought from the prison. He told Joseph the two dreams, and Joseph interpreted them, giving glory to God. There will be seven years of bonker harvest, followed by seven years of severe famine. The famine will be so severe that people will not remember their previous years of abundance. But Joseph did not only give the interpretation of the dreams, he also counseled Joseph, the Pharaoh, as to how to address the coming crisis. So in verse thirty-three, Joseph said, "Now therefore, let Pharaoh select a discerning and wise man and set him over the land of Egypt. Let him appoint officers over the land to collect twenty percent of the produce of the land of Egypt in the several plentiful years." They were to store up the grain under the king's authority and keep food in the cities. In this way, they will have a reserve for the land during the years of famine. Now, let's read chapter forty-one, verses thirty-seven to fifty-seven. "So the advice was good in the eyes of Pharaoh and in the eyes of all his servants. And Pharaoh said to his servants, 'Can we find such a one as this, a man in whom is the spirit of God?'" Then Pharaoh said to Joseph, "Inasmuch as God has shown you all this, there is no one as discerning and wise as you. You shall be over my house, and all my people shall be ruled according to your word. Only in regard to the throne will I be greater than you." And Pharaoh said to Joseph, "See, I have set you over all the land of Egypt." Then Pharaoh took his signet ring off his hand and put it on Joseph's hand, and he clothed him in garbards of fine linen and put a gold chain around his neck, and he had him ride in the second chariot which he had. And they cried out before him, 'Bow the knee!' So he set him over all the land of Egypt. Pharaoh also said to Joseph, "I am Pharaoh, and without your consent, no man may lift his hand or foot in all the land of Egypt." And Pharaoh called Joseph's name, Zaphenath Panear, and he gave him as a wife Asenaph, the daughter of Potiphar, priest of On. So Joseph went out all over the land of Egypt. Joseph was thirty years old when he stood before Pharaoh, king of Egypt. And Joseph went out from the presence of Pharaoh and went throughout all the land of Egypt. Now, in the several plentiful years, the ground brought forth abundantly. So he gathered up all the food of the seven years, which were in the land of Egypt, and laid up the food into cities. He laid up in every city the food of the fields which surrounded them. Joseph gathered very much grain as the sand of the sea, until he stopped counting, for it was immeasurable. And to Joseph were born two sons, before the years of famine came, whom Asenaph, the daughter of Potiphar, priest of On, bore to him. Joseph called the name of the firstborn Manasseh, for God had made me forget all my toil and all my father's house. And the name of the second he called Ephraim, for God has caused me to be fruitful in the land of my affliction. Then the year, several years of plenty, which were in the land of Egypt, ended, and the seven years of famine began to come, as Joseph had said. The famine was in all the lands, but in all the land of Egypt there was bread. So when all the land of Egypt was famished, the people cried to Pharaoh for bread. Then Pharaoh said to all the Egyptians, "Go to Joseph. Whatever he says to you, do." The famine was all over the face of the earth. And Joseph opened all the storehouses and sold to the Egyptians, and the famine became severe in the land of Egypt. So all countries came to Joseph in Egypt to buy grain because the famine was severe in the lands. Pharaoh and all the people saw that the advice that Joseph gave was good. And Pharaoh said to his servants, "Can we find such a one as this, a man in whom is the spirit of God?" Pharaoh chose Joseph for three reasons. He said, "You are the one God has shown all of this." Two, no one is as discerning as wise and wise as you. And three, you have the spirit of God in you. Even Pharaoh acknowledged that Joseph was extraordinarily wise. He recognized the reality of God's power in his life. Those who know us, believers, should be able to see God in us through our words and actions. If people see us as persons in whom the spirit of God lives. I don't think Joseph was thinking about himself when he gave the advice to Pharaoh, but Pharaoh had enough evidence to convince him that Joseph was the man most suitable for the exalted position. So Pharaoh said Joseph, in charge of the palace and all of Egypt, he will be the second in command to Pharaoh. What a complete change for Joseph, all in one day. From the prison to the palace, from rags to riches. He became the prime minister of Egypt. Joseph himself would have been most surprised. Most surprised, but it had been about thirty years of preparation for this upliftment. God had been with him from the time he was put in the pit by his brothers to when he was a slave in Potiphar's house and when he was sent to prison for a crime he didn't commit. Yes, God had been giving him many opportunities to develop his character and skills, especially in administration and as an overseer in Potiphar's house and as the one in charge of all the prisoners. God had become real to him. He had blessed his work and made him successful in all that he did. Joseph's life proves to us beyond doubt that promotion comes from God. Psalm seventy-five, verse six. Joseph was now being rewarded for his diligence, his faithfulness, and his unflinching trust in God. Let us see what Psalm one hundred and five, seventeen to twenty-two, has to say about this man, Joseph. Psalm one hundred and five, verses seventeen to twenty-two. Excuse me. He sent he, their God. He sent a man before them, Joseph, who was sold as a slave. They hurt his feet with fetters. He was laid in iron until the day that his word came to pass. The word of the Lord tested him. The king sent and released him. The rulers of the people let him go free. He made him lord of his house and ruler of all his possessions, to bind his princes at his pleasure and teach his elders wisdom. That's what that Psalm has to say about Joseph. Here, we see the blessings that followed his afflictions. Psalm thirty, verse five, says, "Weeping may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning." This was Joseph's day of triumph. Pharaoh put his signet ring on his hand, clothed him in fine linen, and put a gold chain round his neck. He made him ride in a chariot, while people bowed before him. He gave him a wife, Asenaph. Everything happened as Joseph had predicted. He went throughout the land of Egypt to ensure that enough grains were stored up during the several years of plenty. Verse forty-nine says, "Joseph gathered much, very much grain, as the sand on the sea, until he stopped counting, for it was immeasurable." Joseph had two sons born to him. He named the first one Manasseh, saying, "God has made me forget all my toil and all my father's house." He named the second son Ephraim, saying, "For God has caused me to be fruitful in the land of my affliction." Note that even though he was in Egypt, he gave his two sons Hebrew names and gave glory to God, the God of Abraham and Isaac, who had become his own God. When we remember how God has brought us through difficult times, it should make us grateful and help us to determine to live for his glory. When the several years of plenty were over, the severe, and the severe famine began, Pharaoh allowed Joseph to handle the crisis, for he had trust in his leadership. People came from all the known world to buy grains in Egypt. And that takes us to chapter forty-two. Chapter forty-two. And I'm going to read the first twenty-two verses, or twenty-four verses. "When Jacob saw that there was grain in Egypt, Jacob said to his sons, 'Why do you look at one another?' And he said, 'Indeed, I have heard that there is grain in Egypt. Go down to that place and buy for us there, that we may live and not die.'" So Pharaoh's ten brothers, so Joseph's ten brothers, went down to buy grain in Egypt. But Jacob did not send Joseph's brother Benjamin with his brothers, for he said, "Let some calamity before him." And the sons of Israel went to buy grain among those who journeyed for the famine in the land of Egypt. Now Joseph was governor over the land, and it was he who sold to all the people of the land. And Joseph's brothers came and bowed down before him with their faces to the ground. Joseph saw his brothers and recognized them, but he acted as a stranger to them and spoke roughly to them. Then he said to them, "Where do you come from?" And they said, "From the land of Canaan to buy food." So Joseph recognized the brothers, but they did not recognize him. Then Joseph remembered the dreams which he had dreamed about them and said to them, "You are spies. You have come to see the nakedness of the land." And they said to him, "No, my lord, but your servants have come to buy food. We are all one man's sons. We are honest men. Your servants are not spies." But he said to them, "No, but you have come to see the nakedness of the land." And they said, "Your servants are twelve brothers, the sons of one man in the land of Canaan. And in fact, the youngest is with our father today, and one is no more." But Joseph said to them, "It is as I spoke to you, saying, 'You are spies. In this manner you shall be tested. By the life of Pharaoh, you shall not leave this place unless your youngest brother comes here. Send one of you, and let him bring your brother, and you shall be kept in prison, that your words may be tested to see whether there is any truth in you, or else, by the life of Pharaoh, surely you are spies." So he put them all together in prison for three days. Then Joseph said to them, the third day, "Do this and live, for I fear God. If you are honest men, let one of your brothers be confined to prison, but you go and carry grain for the famine of your houses and bring your youngest brother to me, so your words will be verified and you will not die." And they did so. Then they said to one another, "We are truly guilty concerning our brother, for we saw the anguish of his soul when he pleaded with us, and we will not hear. Therefore, this distress has come upon us." And Reuben answered them, saying, "Did I not speak to you, saying, 'Do not sin against the boy?'" And you would not listen. Therefore, behold, his blood is now required of us." But they did not know that Joseph understood them, for he spoke to them through an interpreter, and he turned himself away from them and wept. And he returned to them again and talked with them, and took Simeon from them and bound him before their eyes. The famine was very severe in the land of Canaan and affected Jacob and his sons. Having heard that there was grain in Egypt, Jacob asked his, Joseph's ten older brothers to go down to Egypt to buy grain, so that their family will not die of hunger. But he was not going to allow Benjamin, Joseph's younger brother, to go with them because he feared some harm might befall him. Benjamin was, as he thought, the only surviving son of Rachel, his favorite wife. As far as he knew, Jacob was dead. So the ten brothers went to Egypt and stood before Joseph, the governor of the land and the one in charge of the sale of the grain. They bowed themselves to the ground before him, thus fulfilling the dream that he had dreamt about them long ago. Joseph recognized his brothers, but they didn't recognize him. He was dressed like an Egyptian and spoke through an interpreter. Moreover, he acted as a stranger to them and spoke harshly to them. "Where are you from?" he asked them. "From the land of Canaan," they answered. "We have come to buy food." "I don't believe you. You are spies," Joseph said. "You have come to see the nakedness of our land." How did Joseph get to Egypt? The brothers were the ones who sold him into slavery twenty years earlier to stop his dream of them bowing down to him from coming true. What they did not know at that time was that they were in fact setting in motion the fulfillment of that dream, which was God's plan for Joseph. No one can defeat God's plan. Why did Joseph treat his brothers so harshly? He was testing them. This was the first of the series of tests he was going to put them through before revealing to them who he really was. So he accused them of being spies, something he knew was not true of them. And in an attempt to defend themselves, calling him lord and referring to themselves as "your servants", they told him about their family in verse thirteen. "Your servants are twelve brothers, the sons of one man in the land of Canaan. And in fact, the youngest is with our father today, and one is no more." What an irony. There they were, standing before the one that they thought was no more, Joseph himself. Joseph refused to believe them, saying that they would not leave Egypt unless their youngest brother was brought to Egypt. That was the only way they could convince him of their innocence. He put them in prison for three days and then released them, threatening to have them killed if they didn't bring Benjamin to him. Then the brothers spoke to one another in Hebrew, not knowing that Joseph heard and understood all they said. They were sure that they were being punished for what they did to Joseph many years ago, how he had pleaded with them, and they would not listen. Only Reuben had tried to save him. "Now his blood is being required of us," Reuben said. They were so sure that Joseph was dead. As they spoke, Joseph grew so emotional that he had to leave them to go and weep. When he returned, Simeon was taken and bound before their eyes. They were to be in prison until Benjamin was brought to Joseph. Here, we find the brothers confessing their sin against Joseph. They had carried that guilt for over twenty years. But now, for the first time, they were openly admitting their guilt. Proverbs twenty-eight, verse thirteen, says, "People who conceal their sins will not prosper. But if they confess and turn to them, they will receive mercy." Are you living in guilt over some wrong you have done in the past? You don't have to despair. There is a way out. Jesus is always ready to deliver you and set you free if you confess and repent of the action. Now, let's read the rest of chapter forty-two. Excuse me. "Then Joseph gave a command to fill their sacks with grain and restore every man's money to his sack and to give them provisions for the journey. Thus he did for them. So they loaded their donkeys with the grain and departed from there. But as one of them opened his sack to give his donkey feed at the encampment, he saw his money, and there it was in the mouth of his sack. So he said to his brothers, 'My money has been restored, and there it is, in my sack.' Then their hearts failed them, and they were afraid, saying to one another, 'What is this that God has done to us?'" "Then they went to Jacob their father in the land of Canaan and told him all that had happened to them, saying, 'The man who is lord of the land spoke roughly to us and took us for spies of the country. But we said to him, 'We are honest men. We are not spies. We are twelve brothers, sons of our father. One is no more, and the youngest is with our father this day in the land of Canaan.'" "Then the man, the lord of the country, said to us, 'By this I will know that you are honest men. Leave one of your brothers here with me. Take food for the famine of your households and be gone, and bring your youngest brother to me, so I shall know that you are not spies and that you are honest men. I will grant your brother to you, and you may trade in this land.'" Then it happened, as they emptied their sacks, that surprisingly, each man's bundle of money was in his sack. And when they and their fathers saw the bundles of money, they were afraid. And Jacob their father said to them, "You have bereaved me. Joseph is no more. Simeon is no more, and you want to take Benjamin. All these things are against me." Then Reuben spoke to his father, saying, "Kill my two sons if I do not bring him back to you. Put him in my hands, and I will bring him back to you." But he said, "My son shall not go down with you, for his brother is dead and is left alone. If any calamity should befall him along the way in which you go, then you will bring my gray hair with sorrow to the grave." Joseph commanded that their sacks should be filled with grains, but that their money should be restored in their sacks. They were even given provision for the journey. Even though Joseph treated the brothers harshly. Even though Joseph treated the brothers harshly. He was very generous to them. However, on their way back, when one of them discovered the money at the mouth of his sack, they were all afraid. Their guilt did not allow them to recognize God's blessing. They actually blamed God for it. What is this that God has done to us, they complained. When they got to their father, they narrated everything that had happened. How the lord of the country, that is Joseph, had spoken roughly to them, accusing them of being spies. How he had detained Simeon in prison and asked them to bring Benjamin. So as to prove to him that they were honest men. Then they opened their sacks and discovered that each man's money was in his sack. Causing their father and them to be more afraid. That was another test that Joseph was giving his brothers. God was testing their hearts. Would they say or do anything about the money they found in their sacks? And Jacob said to them, you have bereaved me. Joseph is no more. Simeon is no more. And you want to take Benjamin? All these are against me. Jacob was in a state of despair. Joseph is no more. Jacob had not got over the supposed death of his favorite son Joseph. He believed the lie that Joseph's brothers had told him. He had been living under that false impression. That Joseph was dead for more than twenty years. Sometimes we believe the di- lie of the devil when we are going through trials. We say things like, God has forsaken me. No, he hasn't. It's a lie, and we must not believe it. With Simeon in prison in Egypt. Jacob said, there was no way he would allow them to take Benjamin along with them to Egypt. How I wish Jacob knew the joy that was ahead of him. All these things are against me, he said. At the time he said this, God was actually working everything for his good. And so, in spite of Reuben's foolish pledge to his father. That he could kill his two sons if he failed to bring Benjamin back. Jacob refused to release Benjamin. For he said, any calamity that befell him will cause his premature death. Let us pray. Heavenly Father. You are good. And you remain in charge of every detail of our lives. No matter what we may be going through, whether good or bad. It took Joseph thirteen years of patient endurance. For you to bring him where you needed him to be. His life shows us how you work deliberately to reveal your glory and accomplish your plan. Please, Father, help us to grow our faith, especially at those times when it seems you are silent. To know that you are at work. And that you are in fact doing something greater than we can understand. We give glory to your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Join us next time as we study Genesis chapters forty three and forty four. Good night.